And they're really the onsite contact for pilots and guests out at the airport. And they set the traffic patterns for landing and ground movement. And they're kind of responsible, and they are also responsible for routine building, maintenance, and monitoring some of the systems out there. And one of the key things about them, of course, is they know the aviation industry. And since we no longer have an airport manager on staff and out there, we feel that this is an important service for the city. And I would recommend that we look at, including that in the 2012 budget. It was not originally proposed for the 2012 budget, but in looking through the contract and looking through the information, I would propose that we would include that in the 2012 budget. Another request that you may be familiar with that was received at the Finance Committee was a request from Let's Go Fishing, which is a charitable organization that functions across the street, but their home offices are here in Wilmer. And they've made a request for $50,000 over a five-year period, so $10,000 a year over five years. We have not included that request in the budget at this point. And so, we'd propose that there maybe be some discussion about that, or we would like some direction on that. And then the final item that kind of is an additional request is from the Fire Department. There was a Quint proposed and discussed at the Finance Committee, and that's an apparatus for the Fire Department. And it was proposed at, excuse me, $640,000. It is not proposed for the 2012 budget. It was in the 2013 budget, and it was proposed at a low cost of $450,000. So, the cost is higher. It's also being asked to move up a year. And that may be something we want to talk about as we talk about vehicle replacements later, but those are the couple of items for additional requests. The Airport Fixed-Based Operator, which I am recommending at this time, and the Let's Go Fishing, as well as the Quint, and those are not currently funded.
Thank you, Charlene. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Charlene. I just want to make sure to recall on the fixed base operator. That was left out of the original budget. It wasn't the intent that we had some idea how we were going to eliminate it?
It was not the intent to leave it out of the 2012 budget. It was left out of the 2012 budget. It was not the intent to leave it out of the 2012 budget. There was not another plan of operation pros. So, I'm coming back to recommend that we include that in the 2012 budget because it is important to the service that we have out at the airport to have that fixed-based operator and that point of contact, and somebody who's familiar with the aviation industry and can do all of the things that I just listed.
Okay. And then, just to follow up on that, if that goes in, something else will have to come out.
Something else will have to come out, or we will have to adjust, you know, we'll have to adjust revenues and expenditures in order to balance that, and we would bring that recommendation back to the next Finance Committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselman Reese? Two questions. The $23,200 to the fixed base, to the FBO, is that the full payment?
That's what, that's an estimate on what it could cost. I mean, we were, they have a contract that requires negotiation. It could be higher than that, but this is the number that we have right now for the budget. But we would begin those negotiations. We will budget accordingly and fund that.
Okay. The other question is in regards to the Quint. You said it was originally proposed at $450,000, and now it's $640,000, even though we're buying it earlier.
There is a different cost in that, and I'm sure the Fire Chief Mark Kelvin can ask those, can answer those questions. At this time, I'm not necessarily recommending that we go forward with the Quint. I mean, it is part of the vehicle replacement. I think it needs to be part of the vehicle replacement policy and vehicle replacement discussion. But it is on the horizon. If we don't do it in 2012, we will be looking at it again in 2013.
Excuse me, Charlie. Chief Kelvin, would you like to respond to that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Reese, yes, basically what I did is I presented that as a informational tool suggesting that if the vehicle were purchased in 2012, there could be a cost savings of $18,000 to $25,000 because of changes in DOT standards. It was the idea to float the balloon, so to speak, and I guess I would agree with the city administrator that it's a good idea to talk about it, but that it probably is better to be placed in the 2013 budget. Can you go through the vehicle replacement plan?
Yeah, but I'm still confused, Mark, Chief Kelvin, because it was proposed in '13 for $450,000, and now it's $640,000.
The amount in 2013 was for a pumper only. The Quint is a different concept of a vehicle. It has a ladder on top of it, and so, basically, it gives you a second elevated master stream to put water on higher buildings. It would save dollars in time on our current ladder, and it would extend the useful life of the ladder truck. And by doing, extending the useful life of the ladder truck, similar to what we did with the tanker when we bought that, we made that a combination vehicle, a tanker and a pumper. And by that, we were able to get pieces of equipment. This way, we'd be able to trade in one of our engines, and then we'd have a second elevated master stream, which would help us with our ISO, our NFPA standards, and then would reduce the time that we put on the ladder. So, that's the reason for the increased dollars from the $450,000.
How do you handle, City Administrator, how do you handle $640,000 additional?
It's not $640,000. Is it $640,000 additional? We would actually go back to, I mean, in 2013, we would have to, if it does indeed need to be replaced in 2013, that's a year, we would need to adjust and amend the capital improvement plan or the capital outlay to accommodate that, and we would have to shift other projects or other pieces of equipment out in order to accommodate that. So, I mean, it's just, it's something to be aware of, and it's on the planning horizon. And we'll come back at that time with a recommendation on that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the Let's Go Fishing, I don't think we need to take that as that's the only solution or that's the only thing we can do. That's their request. Here's $10,000 a year for five years. If we are inclined to do something, we could put any amount on the table that we would like, make it a one-year request, or however we'd like to do it, but I think we need to talk about that one a little bit.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, Dennis. I guess the first question I have is, does it meet the public purpose test? Would it meet the public purpose test?
I'm assuming you're talking about Let's Go Fishing, though?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You asking me?
I'm asking anybody.
I really think that's a question, I mean, that's a question for the council. I mean, this has come before, this request has come forward to council. We have, you know, the city has funded some charitable organizations in the past, so it's not that we've never done this before. It's just a matter of, you know, is this a community priority, a council priority, and at what level? And it was not something that was requested, and it was not something that was in time for the, you know, they did not make the request for the 2012 budget, so it was not included. They've subsequently come back and are seeking funding. And I agree with Councilmember Anderson. I mean, this is their request. It does not mean that that's the only level of funding.
Councilmember Christensen? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Charlene, for the information and the request. The Let's Go Fishing, as I recall, started with volunteers only. They volunteered fishing pontoons, vehicles to pull them with, people that would volunteer their time, and it's morphed into a sort of a business. I believe it's still a 501(c)(3) profit. However, they own pontoons and vehicles. They have paid people on their business plan, and it did not, one way didn't start this. A group of individuals did. From this area started that. And I don't think it meets the public purpose test because of that. I mean, I could see it as the volunteer thing. It's a great venue for seniors to go out and fish, but I also believe there's a lot of people out there that will continue to volunteer this. Where they ran into trouble was insurance liability. And again, that's where the government steps in and says, you have to do this, and you have to do that, and you're not even allowed to volunteer to take someone on your pontoon. You don't know the liability you're taking up. It's terrible that it's that way, and that's why they formed the 501(c)(3) and took out the $30,000 a year insurance. But I still believe there's a lot of people out there that will volunteer to do this, their pontoons, regardless of the liability issue. And then I think it needs to continue as a volunteer organization. Times are tough, and the economy's not going to, it's going to take 10, 20 years to climb out of what we're in, and we haven't seen the worst of it yet. This LGA thing, it is, someday it's going to go away, and then we're talking $4 million plus for our city here. And if we make a five-year commitment today, what if it went away next year? We're going to say, sorry, you know, your commitment's gone. Now, you better go look somewhere else. I still think they need to look at the service organizations and continue that type of funding. And once again, there's volunteers out there that are willing to do this, and I think it needs to remain in that way.
Charlene, if I may, this would be better discussed at a committee meeting. Am I right on that?
Yeah, I think this request was made to the Finance Committee, and so, it was brought forward as an, again, it's just as information that it's not, that it's not an item that's included in the budget. I think any guidance to the Finance Committee and having further discussion on it is appropriate, but we are not expecting a decision from the council.
Councilmember Anderson, could you put that on your agenda?
We'll have it on, well, we're not meeting for a couple, we're on an ex-Finance agenda.
And I guess I just would clarify too on their funding request. Just to be clear, what they did ask for is, they did ask for $10,000 a year for five years, and they have asset, and they would split that funding in the first year in 2012. 80% would go to organizational support, 20% would go to endowment. 2013, it would change to 70% and 30%, 2014, 60% and 40%, and then the final two years, they would split that, $10,000, 50% and 50% versus their organizational support and endowment. And again, I just wanted to clarify what their actual request is.
Sure. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Are you going to cover the, you've got?
Yep. I want to talk a little bit about capital outlay on this, and you can see the overall capital outlay program for the city, about $7.5 million. They kind of broke that down for you into projects and then vehicles. So, about $6.2 million of that is proposed in various projects, everything from furniture in police to genie lift for the Civic Center, down to, you know, cracked ceiling and seating side runway. And then, of course, the largest expenditure in that $6 million is for the industrial park, and so, for completion and expansion of the industrial park. And that funding, of course, comes from the local option sales tax. And then, the other portion of the vehicle, of the capital outlay program is in vehicles and vehicle replacement, and that's guided by a vehicle replacement policy. And that policy guides, you know, when and how vehicles are replaced, and it does everything from, you know, mileage and maintenance costs to hours of usage, depending on the type of vehicle or type of equipment and such. And so, we're proposing about $1.2, $1.25 million in vehicle replacement. Some of those are patrol cars and detective cars. We also have some large equipment in the Public Works Department, a couple of loaders, dump trucks, and pickups and such that are proposed for replacement as part of the vehicle replacement policy. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on the capital outlay, and certainly all of the department directors are here if there are specific questions about a department project.
All the questions or comments from the council? Councilwoman?
I have a question, Charlene, on the parks and concession stand at Swanson Field.
Sure. Steve, could you answer that on the proposed to, for the Parks and Concession Stand, the proposed improvements, what it entails? Is that what you're looking for, Councilwoman Aron?
Mary Annish and Councilmember Aron, our game plan is to improve their site by the orange baseball field. Currently, the concession stand at Swanson is not usable. So, our plan is to restore that facility into a restroom facility and storage area for park equipment, and then to create a new concession stand press box over by the orange baseball field. Our game plan is to work with the baseball boosters on this project, and we're taking a multi-year approach to that. We're thinking it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood. We've priced out similar facilities that have been built in the last few years in different communities, and the game plan, at least what we're looking at is in the neighborhood of $40,000 to $50,000. So, we're looking at a three-year plan to put together enough resources to get that done in about 2014. It would be a press box, concession stand, more of the smaller type items of possibly hot dogs, and then popcorn, and just packaged goods versus grilling stations and such like that, because we believe we've got that over at Baker right now.
Thank you, Steve. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Charlene, on the capital outlay program for vehicles, I see we've got a CSO pickup there under the police protection, and then a pickup under the Civic Center. Those pickups are used just locally. They're not, I don't believe they're driven in Minneapolis or out of the county. They're for local use, and can't we expect them to run a little longer? And I don't know which one they have or what they're replacing. I don't know that, but couldn't they run 150, 200,000 miles or more than that? I mean, these vehicles today are built to last a long time. And is that, and are both of them new vehicles?
Okay. I'm going to let the chief and Steve kind of answer the mileage on those vehicles. Again, I mean, they're per the vehicle replacement policy, and that does guide, you know, does guide the replacement, and we are always trying to kind of match that, kind of, I guess I call it the sweet spot of, you know, right before the vehicle's going to, you know, have major repair and major service and such, but we do try to extend the life as much as we possibly can. So, I don't know if either the chief or Steve have kind of what the mileage are on the ones proposed to be replaced.
Thank you. On that particular vehicle, that is a 2005, and when I filled this sheet out early last spring, at that time, it had 137,897 miles on it. Those are all city miles. I guess it's council decision if they want us to push it to 200, 300,000, whatever you wish.
I think we've, you know, on that one, I think we've tried to push the miles as far as we can push them.
We were going to discuss vehicle replacement policy somewhere along that. I think we haven't had that discussion yet, but that should be part of it, I think.
Yeah. I think, you know, we can bring back the, we can bring back the vehicle replacement policy for review. We could probably start that review process at the Finance Committee. I think Chair Anderson has asked for that, and so, we can, again, kind of review the guidelines that we use for vehicle replacement, and that's really by, you know, class of vehicle. And again, you know, depending on the vehicle, what the guidelines are for replacement. Some of it's age, and some of it's mileage, as you know, and then some of it with large equipment is, you know, hours.
The Civic Center one, was that a new pickup, too?
I believe a new pickup's proposed.
Yes, Mayor Mary Annish, Councilmember Christensen, that pickup is for Civic Center usage, and it's the facility that they, or the vehicle they use to get around, but it's also the plow that they use to clean the snow in that area. And I'm not sure of the year off the top of my head. I didn't bring that information with me. But it doesn't have the tremendous miles because it's used locally, but it's got the wear and tear of pushing snow. You'll also see in the Leisure Services, the van. The van that that will be replacing is a 1996. We did what you said. That one still doesn't have a lot of miles on it. I think it's less than 70,000 miles, but it is 16 years old and in the repair shop right now. So, we are trying to do what you're saying and extend those useful life when possible, especially for your vehicles that we use for our services.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, just for clarification, it is, our intent to look at the vehicle replacement policy and have it reviewed, changed if necessary, so it will be applicable for the 2013 budget. So, we'll start that review probably after the budgeting process is completed.
And I would propose you, you know, these are the vehicles that we will adopt if the vehicle replacement, if the vehicle policy review results in any changes to usage or such, I mean, we would, you know, we'll change our vehicle replacement to reflect that. But for 2012, we would propose, these are the vehicles we're currently proposing, under the guidelines we currently have.
I understand you have a watch list for us?
We do. We have, again, and I call it a watch list, and these are kind of items that are on the planning horizon. We haven't necessarily identified dollars for them, and some of that is because we haven't identified a project yet or a fully scaled and scoped project and such. And so, a couple of the items that are on the watch item is quiet zones. I know, we know that those issues, that has been raised as an issue of concern in the community, has been raised by some council members, the mayor, and so, developing and funding, you know, quiet zones. But we haven't identified funding to that, and that's partially because we don't have a full project and a scope to really set the funding. But that's something that's on the planning horizon, and how we would fund that and where we would fund that would, again, be probably out of capital outlay, so that would change out years. Another one is stormwater improvements. So, you know, there's been a lot of discussion on stormwater. There's been the Stormwater Task Force and some of the recommendations, and there's been a study on stormwater. And again, that's an important issue for the community, but we have not in the 2012 budget, either in the general authority nor in the capital outlay. We haven't identified specific projects and allocated specific funding to them at this time for the 2012 budget. But it doesn't mean that we have forgotten these items, just means that they are on our planning horizon, and they're likely to be items that you see in future capital outlays and future capital planning, much like the vehicles.
Are there any other questions or comments for Charlene? Councilwoman Aron?
One question, Charlene. Also on that rest, there's things, other things, items to and of for quite a while. Well, in 2012, we had Highway 12, opening up Highway 12 budget in the last year's budget.
Okay.
Is that, is there any movement on that, or are we going to look at re?
There's some discussion going on with the Wilmer Design Center about that, if that plan is going to change and revising that. I mean, again, that would be an item that we have not allocated dollars to in the 2012 project, and that hasn't risen to the priority to fund it in 2012.
But it was on the, I believe it was on the budget for the last couple of years.
It may have been in the 2011, 2010 capital outlay, but we haven't spent those dollars, and we haven't designed a project.
Because I believe with the process now, they're looking at, if we can't open up that area, that they're looking at making a primary entrance to downtown area on Thurgood's Third Street.
I think there are some, there's some discussions with the Design Center about maybe some changes in their plan, and some of that's based on the information about what would really be involved in opening up Highway 12 and it being more complex or more costly than was originally envisioned. But those conversations are ongoing, so that will change as well, I think.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, if there's none, I think.
That kind of concludes the presentation that we had, and, you know, if there's any other items or what would like to be discussed, or item for discussion, or again, to come back with additional information, be happy to provide any of that.
We've got about 13 minutes, so if you've got questions, go ahead. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I'm wondering if the, all the department heads that submitted their budgets included the 7% increase in December for electrical rates, because that's all part of everybody's budget also. Is that something that was considered?
I guess I'd ask first on public works, as the majority of the facilities and such.
I know when we put together the waste treatment budget, that was taken into consideration, and I'd have to double check on the public works as well, but I know for sure we did take into account when we did the waste treatment.
We will go back and verify that, but obviously, that is an expense that we know is coming, and so, if it's not included, then we will have to adjust budgets accordingly.
Okay. And then, one other thing that we, I bring up these vehicles as far as replacement, and maybe looking for a place to cut it, because I know we're going to have to get some money somewhere for this airport fixed-based operator contract that we have. I don't know where else you'd suggest, but those are a couple of small items to get some money from.
Okay. Thank you.
Charlene, I'd like to ask you, if you would, to explain, I think, Steve, you did a really good job of explaining it in a short time as you had, but could you explain further the, where the kicking the can down the road, so to speak, how that happens?
Well, some of the challenges, Ben, and I'm not sure if I can, if you go back to, I guess what slide that was where we kind of adjusted local government aid and such when the state has done allowances, and we've had, and that's been done after the fact and after budgets have set and after levies have been set, we've had to go back to the budget and adjust to, you know, essentially account for that lost revenue. And the way you account for lost revenue is really by reducing your expenditures. And so, over the years, what that has done is really kind of come out of capital outlay and has shifted projects, you know, maybe shifted either vehicles or projects from one year out to a further year, and, you know, in essence, you know, kind of kick the can down the road and maybe try to get a little bit longer life out of a vehicle, or try to, you know, stretch out a project and such. And so, you know, it eventually does and will catch up with the city, and I think we'll look at that when we start looking forward to the 2013 budget on our capital project and trying to develop more of a comprehensive capital improvement plan over the next five years, and showing what our real capital needs are for the city, and, you know, infrastructure needs as well as, you know, equipment needs and such, and see how we have deferred some of that and such. But eventually, it does kind of catch up, and we are, in this budget, you're trying to kind of catch up with some of that. We've allocated some additional dollars to capital outlay to try to catch up with some of that and do some additional projects and such.
Thank you for saying that, because I was going to point out that we did.
Page eight, I think, if you look at the slides.
Catch up a little bit from the previous years. Am I right, Steve, on that?
Mayor, if I could help add into Mr. Christensen's comment on utilities, because the Civic Center's probably the largest user of utilities, we did increase that due to that 7% increase in cost out there, but not the Aquatic Center. So, hopefully, we're all right with that one.
We'll go back through and look at that, but that's a good point, and it's known expense, and so, we'll go back and look, see what the impact is.
Councilwoman Aron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Charlene, we have, currently, the cultural diversity budget is $42,000, correct?
I believe that's correct for 2012.
And that hasn't been changed from last year. It has been changed a few years prior to that, or so.
Was it last year? Okay, it was $42,000 last year as well.
Last year, yes.
But it stayed the same.
I think it was reduced probably from last. Do we have a written agreement with the school district, or?
At one time, I asked, Charlene.
Yeah, I will have to go back, I'll have to go back and do some research on that, is to see if we have an ongoing written agreement or how that is structured. I think initially, there was a written agreement, so, but I can go back and look through it. I don't have that answer tonight, but I'm happy to get that answer for you.
Well, I'm thinking we could cut that budget in half and take care of that, or most, the majority, or 90%, 95% of a fixed-based operator budget very easily. I question, everybody's afraid to tackle it, but we're trying to get down to bare bones here, and we have other requests. I think that should be, that should be cut to the Design Center, Wilmer Design Center. The budget was cut in half, and there, we're actually getting a return on the investment there with grants and other things that we have received. So, I'm questioning the validity of which is more important, and I'm thinking after the change in diversity in our community, which I don't have any problem with, I think at one point in time, you have to stop milk and stop P.D. McConnell, that's not giving you milk. One way of saying it, very simple, I think that could be trimmed without any major significant changes in our community. I question, not the individuals that are working in that department, I just think that our community has changed and, I think, adopted. They have been very well to the changes in our population, and I think that, a little fluff we could trim down very easily, put that into a better place.
Thank you, Councilman. I would comment that it is important that we find out where that money goes or what happens.
We'll bring that information back to the Finance Committee.
You know, I'd hate to cut and find out that it's something that's.
That's why I was asking if we had a written agreement with them.
We'll get that information for you, the council, we'll get that information for the Finance Committee and the council.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we have a little insight into where, what has happened in the last number of months on quiet zones? Where are we on those with respect to implementing them?
Do we have time to go into that?
I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the clock. I, you know, I think we have, we've had some discussions with the railroad, but we haven't come up with a, you know, and we continue to have some discussions with them. We don't have a project planned for implementation of those at this time, but we'll continue to have those discussions and develop that plan and develop that project, and then bring some recommendations back.
Is the plan to, is the plan to segment it so that we at least are doing small amounts at the time?
The mayor's been more involved in those discussions than I am, so I guess I would defer back to the mayor.
I would say this about that, is that the discussions that we have been having have been with Houston, Burlington, northern, out of Houston, the main office, and some local people here that have some say in the matter. But there are certain things that would be requested by them of the city if we could get the quiet zone, like, for example, closing an intersection or something like that would be involved, and this would have to be discussed at great length before we could do something like that. I hope I haven't confused you with my answer, but it's.
I think we're still in the early planning.
It is really in the early planning stages, yeah.
But we do recognize it's a priority and important, and the mayor and staff are continuing to work on it. to work on it.
We are working on it.
It is clear as mud.
Okay. It was meant to be.
And then, if I could, some of us, Charlene, attended a meeting through the Chamber of Commerce a number of months back. And we had Peter Hutchinson, who was the State of Minnesota Finance Commissioner. And some significant things that I recall that he said was that we cannot kick the can down the road any longer. We have to make some structural changes to the way we do business. He used the term, "It will take us at least 25 years to get out of the situation that we're in." And that we are, we are now operating in what he called a new normal. The old normal isn't valid any longer. So I think that we need to keep that in mind as we discuss the budget.
Thank you.
Councilman Dachan?
Uh, Councilman Christensen? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Fagerly brought up a few meetings ago, the CAT funding. And if the state and federal government does not, if they decrease their funding, that we, as a city, would be responsible for about 80 to 85 grand a year. Is that, is that anywhere in the-
That is not in the 2012 budget. I mean, we have gotten some, you know, there's some information out there on that that could change that. And that really should, I guess I should have listed that as one of our watch items as well. We don't think that'll impact the 2012 budget, and so we've budgeted the CAT funding at the level that was requested. But yes, it could have an impact, again, as to the funding formula and how that changes and what the local share might be. And so that is something that we are keeping our eyes on. And again, it's kind of on the 2013 planning horizon.
Councilman Christensen?
Baseball boosters, we're still in our agreement with them. Was it a five years?
I believe it was a five year, and I think we're in the final year of the five year. 12 would be the final year.
12 will be the-
12 will be the final year of the agreement. So it is funded for this year.
Any further questions, comments? Did you have something that you wanted to add, Charlie?
I was just going to address the quiet zone issue by Councilmember Dachan.
Sure, maybe you can shed some light on it here.
Certainly. The two quiet zones that are planned are the Wilmer Avenue Crossing, which has been planned for several years but has been put on hold. So once the land release is completed, then the Wilmer Avenue connection does include a quiet zone for that crossing. The other quiet zone area, which is budget, planned for 2013, is the Trotta Avenue Crossing. So those, those are the two crossings that would have quiet zones within the next couple of years. And I believe the crossings that you were referring to, Mary Yanish, you're the ones at Seventh and Tenth Street, are a little bit more complicated to deal with.
And those are kind of, and those are kind of in out years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Go call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Over here.
Anderson.
Here.
Amon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dachan.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlick.
Present.
One absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? During none, we will approve the consent items as written. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
We need a motion.
We didn't have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, let's do a motion. Approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the motions, or I'm sorry, the move to pro, the deletions and additions to the agenda, all the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Thank you. At this particular time, we have one person scheduled for the public forum, and that would be Cecil Meyer. Would you like to come to the podium, name and address, please?
My name is Cecil Meyer. I reside at 615 Becker Avenue Southwest here in Wilmer. I thank the council for allowing me here tonight to address yourselves and the general public, to share what I view and we view as a very important opportunity for the Wilmer area. On November 3rd, starting at 6:00 p.m., Minnesota Teen Challenge is holding their first annual banquet in Wilmer. Minnesota Teen Challenge is a very successful international faith-based drug and alcohol residential treatment program. Minnesota Teen Challenge is now looking at the possibility of establishing a residential facility in one of two areas in Minnesota. Those two areas being West Central Minnesota with the facility in Wilmer or the possibility of Rochester. It is important at this point in time that we show support in this area by attendance at the banquet forthcoming in November. We are here to invite the general public and public officials from the Wilmer area and all of the surrounding areas to the banquet. Our purpose for being here tonight and for providing the banquet is basically to create a broad-based support system for Minnesota Teen Challenge, starting with the banquet November 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight and then speak to this very important subject. If there's any questions, I certainly will answer them at this time.
I do have a comment. Go ahead, Councilman Anderson.
Could you tell us where that banquet is being held?
Yes, banquet will be held at the Holiday Inn Conference Center. Thank you.
Would you say just a word about the high success rate that Teen Challenge has? Scott?
I can, I can address that a little bit. If you are looking for more information in terms of the program and also success rates, et cetera, for the program, you can visit the website at Minnesota Teen Challenge. However, I'll just address it real briefly. The success rate for Minnesota Teen Challenge is approximately 83%. And what we, what we talked about in terms of percentages, there was just a report done by Minnesota Teen Challenge by a private agency that said 83% of the people that had been involved in the Teen Challenge program over the last number of years have been and remained drug-free the six months prior to the survey. So we're talking about people that have been there for, been out for 10 years, 30 years, five years, et cetera. But all of them had, the 83% had been drug-free or alcohol-free the prior six months before the report, so.
Thank you for sharing that. Are there any questions, Councilmember? Cecil, you and I have had discussions about this and I, you know, I would stress with the council and the mayor and the public to really come out and support Minnesota Teen We have a large number of people that have gone through Minnesota Teen Challenge from this area. I don't know if you can quantify that in any way, but just the fact that the numbers that have gone through Teen Challenge from our area warrants the support of our public that hopefully, we can get the center located here.
Yes, and I might mention that it's a possibility at this point. So they're, they're looking at the support level in these two different areas. So yes, it is important that we show support in this area. In terms of quantifying the number of people, I can't give you exact numbers on there. Throughout each year, there, I think you'd be surprised at the numbers from this area. When I'm talking about this area, I'm talking about the West Central region, which is a nine-county area that David defined.
And I'm going to say to the council and everybody here and listening and watching, this would be a huge asset to our community, huge. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman- Where do you get tickets at and how much are they? Or do you just show up?
The best, the best place probably, Councilman Fagerly, is to go to the Minnesota Teen Challenge website. And you can actually sign up there for tickets. And then they'll have your ticket present at the banquet, before the banquet. Another, another place, if you want a place here in town, Reading Therapy Center, which is located at the address that I gave you, that's where I actually live, at 615 Becker Avenue Southwest, you can go there and receive tickets also.
In fact, if you want to see me after the meeting, I've got the phone number and the website address that I can give you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Councilman Christensen? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How is Minnesota Teen Challenge funded? Is this state money or is it all donations or federal or?
There is some state funding, some federal funding, but the majority comes from public support. And when I'm talking majority, I'm talking over the 80% level private funding.
So they're 501(c)(3) then?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you again to the mayor and council.
With that, we will move into the Labor Relations Committee report for October 6th, 2011. Councilman Johnson or Amon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember one on the agenda was, we had public comments from David Hersher from Country Club Drive, and he presented committee information regarding the city's health insurance premiums in comparison to rates paid by Candy White County. And Mr. Hersher asked the committee to consider aligning city and county plans in the future, and that was taken for information. Number two was consideration of filling a building maintenance supervisor. Public Works Director Wilson explained the city had one vacant custodial, custodial position among three and requested consideration to replace the vacant custodial position with a building maintenance supervisor position. Ms. Wilson explained that the custodial position was a grade one and the building maintenance supervisor position would be a grade six. Ms. Wilson explained that the difference in cost for the remainder of this year would be approximately $7,000 and on a yearly basis, there was a 15,000 difference in the two pay grades. And Ms. Wilson further explained that the position, proposed position would be a working supervisor responsible for performing maintenance and custodial work, but also responsible for providing day-to-day supervision, oversight, and task assignment to the other custodians who maintain the city's eight buildings. I questioned the costs included, I questioned the costs included, including the benefits. Councilmember DeBlick asked for more clarification on the supervisor, supervisor reposition roles. Councilmember Reese questioned if there could be cost savings by having an individual able to troubleshoot the HVAC and mechanical rather than relying on outside vendors. Councilmember DeBlick asked if the individual would also be utilized for snowpawing. Councilmember Johnson questioned the need for a supervisor position and the pay grade range. Our city administrator, Ms. Stevens, explained that the proposed position went through the Hewitt scoring system and that the city uses as part of its pay equity program and is how it was determined to be a grade six. Following discussion was made and seconded for the following, and the recommendation is to approve the position of building maintenance supervisor. A motion carried on a 3-1 vote with Councilmember Johnson in opposition. And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to bring this back to committee rather than make a motion to move that forward. There's been other discussion with some other council people who've talked me about it, and we want to rethink this.
And do I need a motion for that to bring it back to the Finance Committee?
We always say we don't need a motion to do nothing, so- That's true. You're doing nothing. We're doing nothing. Bring it back, just for your information. Item number three was a consideration of filling the public works operator area vacancy. That was for information only. Ms. Stevens stated that a public works operator or employee who had previously turned in to a notice, turned in a notice to retire has withdrawn his notice and therefore no vacancy is, we have no vacancy at this time. Number four and five was consideration of ASME general unit and public works contracts. That was for information only. And Ms. Stevens stated that there was some contract language that needed to be clarified and therefore, the contracts with the ASME groups were not ready for discussion at this time. Item number six was miscellaneous. Ms. Stevens reported on the previous question regarding labor relations and Minnesota statutes raised by Mr. Hersher. Ms. Stevens distributed a detached response from a great city attorney who's soon retiring, Mr. Running. They clarified that negotiation sessions are open to the public, but do not require any posting nor any minutes, and that the council and committee can continue to meet in closed session to discuss strategy. There was a letter enclosed in your packet from Mr. Running. Ms. Stevens also provided an update on the previous question raised by Councilmember Johnson regarding MUC and the city's hiring freeze. Ms. Stevens stated that she and Mayor Yanish had recently met with the General Manager Bruce Gom and Vice Chairman Doug Lindblad and, oh, and Chairman, Vice Chairman, and requested that the MUC adhere to the city's hiring freeze. Councilmember DeBlick noted that the city attorney had recently provided a six-month notice of retirement. Councilmembers expressed their sincere appreciation for all the work that Mr. Running has done over the past 37 years, the knowledge he provides and noted that the challenges in replacing him are forthcoming. Motion was made and seconded for the following, that is, that the city accept with regret the notice of retirement from our city adminis, or city attorney.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded that the city council accept with regret the notice of retirement from the city attorney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Committee members discussed the replacement of the city attorney and asked the city administrator to put the, put on the discussion, the future agenda items, so we have more time to discuss what our options are and the costs. We also, I also asked if city staff had been able to obtain information on employees who have other insurance through a spouse. Ms. Stevens stated the city did not collect that information. That staff had asked the insurance vendor, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, for this information and they were unable to provide it. Now, being note, there's no further business, we move to close the meeting, and I will move to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the, of the Labor Relations Committee for October 6th discussion. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for our city attorney on item number six up there, where it states, "Mr. Running clarified that negotiation sessions are open to the public but do not require any posting nor any minutes." What negotiation sessions are we talking about that are open to the public? What, when, when our attorney gets together, Frank, and the city administrator with the union, bargaining people, or what, which ones are you talking about?
Any labor negotiation sessions, when there wouldn't be the quorum of the council there. Obviously, if the council was there, that'd be a different story. But with the city administrator and the city labor attorney there, there's no meeting notice required, but by the section in 179(a), it does have to be open to the public when the negotiations are going on.
So currently and in the past, we have not posted those dates, correct?
Correct.
How does one find out about that if you're the public? If they're going to have a meeting next Wednesday at 4:45 and it's, it's contract negotiations, how does one find out? Do you have to call City Hall every day or?
Well, you contact the city administrator. She's the person that would know when in the future there's going to be a meeting.
Okay, so if I- Okay, so if I or a member of the public said, "I'd like to attend one of those meetings," or all of them, if we called City Hall and told them that, they would contact us then, or the public, and say there's gonna be one, or...
Well, you'd have to ask the city administrator if she'd do that. I suppose if it was a reasonable number of people that wanted to know, it wouldn't be burdensome, but if there's a list of 100 people to call, I don't imagine she's gonna be real interested in doing that, or having her staff do that.
Okay. Then my second question is, what if the council voted no to, you're retired?
You couldn't retire. Well, I think you already voted, but if you had voted no, I guess I'd report to work on Monday, April 2nd.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens, would you care to comment on Ron Christensen's comments that you made?
No, I think, I think Rich answered that appropriately, and...
Perfectly.
There's no further clarification necessary from you. Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes of the Labor Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. The Finance Committee report for October 10th, 2011. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda was public comment. There was no one there to address us. The second item was Let's Go Fishing, Talk to Us. Joe Holm from Let's Go Fishing presented a request to us to consider a donation of $50,000 payable in $10,000 increments over five years. He explained that Let's Go Fishing just completed their 10th year and continues to grow. In 2011, nearly 20,000 people were served through this program. They recently lost funding from the State of Minnesota, and that totaled $300,000 for the last biennium, and that forced Let's Go Fishing to seek other funding sources. The 2012 budget for Let's Go Fishing was distributed to us along with the draft of their 2010 financial report. Councilmember Fagerly raised concerns that the city is already expending funds for, for its recreation department and maintaining city-located public accesses. After a good discussion, the matter was taken for information, and we said we'd talk about it tonight. We talked about it a little bit tonight, and I suspect we'll hear about it again. So that was for information only. The next item, we were supposed to hear from the Candyway County City of Wilmer, EDC, but the executive director was unable to attend the meeting, and that will be presented at a next, at our next Finance Committee meeting. Fourth item was the 2012 mayor's proposed budget. Staff continued its process to review the proposed 2012 departmental budgets with us. Administrator Stevens noted that the decrease in the proposed city administrator's budget of $25,960 from 2011 is mainly due to costs associated with the search for the city administrator. Proposed budget for data processing is increasing $4,514 over 2011, and that's attributed to personnel costs. The proposed mayor-council budget is decreasing $15,540 from 2011, and that's due to a decrease in professional services. The proposed budget for the legal department is increasing less than a half a percent from 2011 to $196,737. Ms. Stevens, 2012 goals include obtaining the land releases for the former, former airport and subsequent expansion of the industrial park, overhaul of the city's website, and increasing communication with citizens, increasing the city's efforts at long-term financial planning, continuing to develop a strong working relationship with the mayor and council, and the replacement of the retiring city attorney. Finance Director Okens reviewed the proposed 2012 expenditures for the finance department, noting an overall increase of $7,740 over 2011, and that again is primarily due to personnel charges, as well as office supplies and personal, professional services. There was no capital outlay for the finance department. Finance Director Okens also provided an overview of the proposed 2012 non-departmental expenditures, noting variances from 2011. The mayor is proposing to terminate the David Turchin Associates contract in 2012, which will reduce expenditures by $27,000. Also cut from the 2012 budget is the internship program, and that saves $5,000. After some discussion, that matter was taken for information only. And we noted there would be a work session today, which we've already had, where we talked a little bit more about the budget. The fifth item is a Dover Township fire contract. Staff reviewed with the committee the proposed fire protection contract for Dover Township. If you remember, we get this one, and we will at a later date get Wilmer Township. The statewide formula used to calculate the amount due from the township is based on information from the previous year, which includes operating costs of the fire department, depreciation of the fire station and equipment, the number of firefighter hours used, and market values of the area covered in Dover Township. Following discussion, there was a motion made second and passed, and I would introduce a resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the agreement as presented in the amount of $30,000, $30,487.92.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to execute the agreement as presented in the amount of $30,487.92. Is there any discussion?
Go call. Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dachin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. The motion carries.
Final item was Ms. Laney. Mayor Yanish reported to us that after pursuing the possibility of having the governor stopped in Wilmer on his job Z tour, it was recently learned that he will be unable to do so. The mayor and staff will continue to work to invite the governor to Wilmer. Now, that was for information only. Unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee for October 10th, 2011. All those in favor say, whoops, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. At this time, we'll have the Public Work Safety Committee report for October 11th, 2011. Councilman Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council will recall, our last meeting, we had some discussions in regards to removal of trees from the 35th Street Northwest right-of-way, and Aron Raizner, who's a resident in that area, was at our meeting, and his property abuts the right-of-way. And the issue of tree removal in the right-of-way occurred when city personnel were locating a storm sewer manhole for several residents planning to use it as an outlet for a backyard drainage project. The amount and size of the trees made it difficult to locate the manhole, and a tree had grown partially around it, and if you were at the meeting, how I had pictures of it, I was amazed how it had grown around it and actually covered it up, and the trunk of the tree was growing over the top of the manhole, actually. And city staff intended to clear the right-of-way...